Mr. Rosecrans, would you please say the pledge?
Yes, sir. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please say the prayer?
Yes. Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to come together. God, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom to make the right decisions tonight. Please lead us, Holy Spirit, in Jesus's name, amen.
Good. Do you guys have time to look at it?
Yes, we approved a consent agenda.
Second.
And moved in second, and we approved the consent agenda. Is there any more discussion? Maida?
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Backer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we kind of changed up the meeting here real quick. We have a donation from the Mona Vista Community Fund to the Kids Connection. Collette, Scaff, please.
You ready to meet?
Do we have a picture?
Maida?
Sure.
Wow.
Picture too.
All right.
Hold on.
Can you do one?
I can.
That is a lot of them.
We need to...
How does it get over here?
Go this way so we can do a picture too.
Do it in the corner there, guys.
Hey, you guys want to stand up in there?
Don't drop that check.
Okay, so where did this money come from? Can I ask?
I would like to ask.
From the community fund? It came from the community? Is this what I gave to Forrest?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I understand.
So, Mr. Mayor, we just wanted to recognize the community fund for these donations to the Kids Connection. Now, part for the building fund and part for operations, very generous, and we just asked them tonight here because we wanted to say thank you. So, thank you, guys.
I hope to come back and report on the same paint they park, so maybe I can do that the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am, that would be awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See you, Ray.
Okay, we'll see you.
Just donations.
Glad you got to see me.
You got the floor, buddy?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Sergeant Martinez and... Oh, not here? Or Bogart, come on up. Did you have anybody you wanted to bring up with you?
Yes, so I have Emily here.
So, I've been on Galloway team, so I'm trying to be a poor guy.
Do you have your badge?
Yes.
Here, all right. Sergeant Victor, thank you very much. Come on up, do you want to introduce your guests?
Yep, this is my fiancee, Emily.
You think so? This is your daughter.
Yeah.
And this is my wife, Lacy.
Hi.
Well, we're pretty honored. Both these gentlemen have been with us for some time, and we're kind of working through things. Tyler's got a lot of experience in the area. He's been with Sawatch County, now us. Michael's been kind of around a little bit as well, and now they're going to honor us with a new position and some personnel management, making sure we're doing everything right under the leadership of Sergeant Ortega. So, tonight, we're going to honor you and swear you into your new position. If you two want to hang the badges on, I sure would appreciate it. Do you want to get in the picture?
Thank you.
All right, so now the official part. Obviously, I have some stuff to read. All right, I state your name. Raise your hand.
Tyler Martin. Michael Martinez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
That on my honor?
That on my honor.
I will never betray my integrity?
I will never betray my integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself?
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions?
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards?
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of my community?
And uphold the values of my community.
And the agency I serve?
And the agency I serve.
I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
The State of Colorado?
The State of Colorado.
The City of Mona Vista?
The City of Mona Vista.
The Charter and Ordinances?
The Charter and Ordinances.
Code of Ethics?
Code of Ethics.
Mission Statement?
Mission Statement.
And Laws and Guidelines?
And Laws and Guidelines.
That I will faithfully perform the duties?
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Sergeant?
Of Sergeant, of Corporal.
To which I have been appointed and upon which I am about to enter.
To which I have been appointed and which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Sorry that so long.
I'm just happy to still be here and serve the community, you know, this department of this city, so thank you for the opportunity.
Michael was our investigator for almost a year or two, so we're gaining a lot of knowledge back out on the street, which is kind of part of the point of it.
Um, yeah, me too. I just enjoy serving the community of Mona Vista, and thanks for opportunities.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm just going to throw this out there because a lot of people may be wondering why we don't stand up when these officers get sworn in and move up in ranks. It's about them, it's not about council. It's about these officers that are here taking care of us and protecting us. That's why we chose to... They're the center of attention, aren't they?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sanos Valley, Reno? Sure. Forrest, you?
Look, I can hide.
She can hide. You need to step.
So, tonight, we just want to honor one of our very own community members. In your packet, you'll see the SLB Colorado Genuine Branding Initiative. This was done a year ago?
Yeah, ish.
So, everybody within the valley, everybody got together and was putting together the branding initiative, and they took drawings and designs from everybody throughout the valley. And Rachel Matson was actually working for the city of Mona Vista when this happened, and she got chosen with her design for the branding initiative. So, the design on the branding initiative is on the flyers. They've also made T-shirts with the branding initiative on them.
Nice.
And tonight, we would like to honor Rachel, giving her a T-shirt and thanking her for everything she's done here in the valley. Rachel?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you have anything else to add?
Well, and just to add that Rachel is our consultant who's working on the city's logos right now.
Nice.
So, y'all may not have known that, but, yeah, so... And actually, very shortly, you'll get to see the next iteration of designs, or tomorrow, actually, so... She was on her part, I haven't done mine yet, but in any case, so now you can put the name of the face space and however that works, so. Very good, thank you.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Lead program, Heather Brooks?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Heather Brooks. I'm the city manager for the city of Alamosa. The reason we're here today is the city and its partners were successful in receiving a LEAD grant through the state. LEAD stands for Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion. And the reason we wanted to come visit with you after meeting with staff was that we wanted to open this up to other communities in the valley, and we wanted to start with the city of Mona Vista. I promised Forrest I would make this a quick five-minute, but we're always here for questions as well. We've got many representatives who are involved from the different agencies. And essentially, what the LEAD program was is, I know for the city of Alamosa, we were almost feeling like we were banging our head against the wall. We had these low-level offenders who were repeating their offenses over and over, and a lot of times, it was related to addiction issues. And simply putting them in jail clearly was not the solution. The LEAD program is funding from the state to allow us a different tool for our officers. It's at the complete discretion of officers and then also at the district attorney's office as well. And it's for those offenders that it's non-aggressive crimes, it's related to addiction and drugs, usually theft is what we're seeing, or if they get caught carrying certain amounts of drugs. And instead of necessarily going into the jail again for the 14th time, the officer could determine if they're eligible for the program. Their carrot is that they could get that one free pass if they engage into the program. And what engagement means is we would do a warm handoff with a caseworker or a case manager, and they would work with that individual to try to get at why they are offending. Is it because they are homeless? Is it because there's behavioral health issues, mental health issues, addiction? Is it because they don't have a job? Whatever that may look like, what is it that's creating the reason for offense and trying to help them get back on their feet? It meets them where they're at. When you look at some of the drug courts, they require automatically that you go clean and you stop using. This program is not like that. It is different, because sometimes individuals are not ready for that. And if you force it on them, they're less likely to be successful than if they can get to the point that they recognize they need that assistance and make that decision on their own. It's not an overnight solution, and it's not a silver bullet. So, as we've talked in the community, we've wanted to make sure to manage expectations at the same time. Some of these offenders, they may re-offend. Hopefully, we start to see that reducing and the amount of re-offence going down. It could be that they do well for a year, and then they have a setback personally, and it creates them to take a few steps back. So, it is more of this long-term solution, but from what we've seen in other communities, it seems to have more of a lasting impact than some of the quick solutions that some are seeing, because it really is helping them to change their lives. The grant that we received from the state pays for not only the caseworkers, but it also pays for an attorney and the district attorney's office, and it pays for what we call all the wraparound services. So, for example, if someone is homeless and needs some rent assistance, or if they do not have a vehicle, or if they're not eligible for Medicaid and they need to visit the dentist, or if they do need treatment for an addiction, it can provide for all of those wraparound services. The grant is effective until 2020, and at that point in time, we would need to figure out how to make it sustainable. My partners assure me that they think there will be future grants at the state level, but that is not a guarantee. And so, from a city perspective, that is something we are constantly looking at, and how can we make this sustainable? But in the meantime, we have until 2020 to use these resources, to pay for these positions, to pay for the wraparound services, to wholly make a difference in these offenders' lives, and help our officers not have to keep picking up the same people over and over again, and to help reduce the jail population. At this point in time, we have 15 who are in it just from the city of Alamosa and the Alamosa Sheriff Department making the referrals. We have 15 people in there. There are seven who have actually declined to participate. It's a new program, and I'm not sure what their reasons are, if they believe it, if it's too good to be true, or if they're just not ready for it. But we have been trying to get more and more offenders into that. When we wrote the grant, we had 100% intention of wanting to bring it out to the entire valley. So, that's what brings us here tonight, is Mona Vista for us felt like the first step that made sense, to see if we wanted to start having officers have the ability to make referrals into the program. As we manage expectations, I will say there are times we may get a phone call from someone in the community who has a family member who has an addiction, and they want to know if they can get them into the program. It's not the silver bullet for all mental health issues, it's not the silver bullet for all drug and addiction issues, it's only for that sliver of those individuals who are having repeat contact with our law enforcement and trying to get them into that system. And so, I know for the city of Alamosa, we hear a lot from our community on needing to do something for addiction and the crime related to those addictions. We still are having to think through what we're going to do for the rest of that spectrum and work with our partners on that. This is one aspect of those who are having the most common contact with law enforcement. And so, I want to keep it short, and so if there's any questions, though, we can provide all the answers, hopefully, that you need. And we're just grateful for the partnership we have of Mona Vista, and we look forward to trying to bring these resources to the whole valley.
Sounds like a great program, and we appreciate you offering your assistance to us with that.
Thank you.
Chief, you're... You think it's great too, I'm sure.
We're both still kind of trying to learn all there is to know about it. We just kind of wanted to get on the same page with you to make sure there wasn't going to be any surprises, but absolutely, I like the... I don't know if niche is the right word, but there are people that fall through the cracks, and good people get caught in bad times, bad places, bad actions. And I think the reality of this program is the cops know that, and they sometimes feel frustrated and stuck. And this is a way that the officers can actually say, you know what? I have a candidate. This person needs help. I think this marriage can work, and it's forever. That's a unique proposition to actually take someone under umbrella and spend that much time, resources, and energy on them to get them right, but the ripple effect can be significant. What they teach people, what they say to people, the people that they don't drag down the same road, so yes, we're 100% behind it. We're just still... This team right here is going to kind of lead us down the road to what to do next. We just kind of want your... Sounds good, let us know how it goes, kind of thing.
Yeah.
I'm curious, if we do that and we have participants here, do they have to travel to Alamosa to meet with the counselor? Or is that going to be a service that'll be available here in Mona Vista?
Our goal, and this is not... This is an amazing question, because the reason we can't just open the doors and say, hey, anybody can start referring in, is because it does have to be somewhat coordinated. So, what we've learned and what we've been told is that the warm handoff works best, which means if the law enforcement officer picks somebody up, instead of saying, here's a card, go meet with them, usually you don't see the follow-through with that, versus if you have the individual there to do the warm handoff, that's when there's the most success. So, we would want to work with the city in regards to, are there certain days where we would make sure that either we can get here in time, or maybe there's times we just have someone in Mona Vista for warm handoffs? We need to work through some of that, but the goal is to have a warm handoff. The other reason we couldn't just open it up to everyone is we want to make sure that the case managers know of the services within the community as well. So, is there working with the client to access the different services? Whatever they can do here in Mona Vista, clearly we want them to be able to do in Mona Vista, and if there's something they do need to travel to Alamosa for, do they have the transportation to be able to do that? And make sure that can happen as well for some of those gaps.
Yeah, because if that's a burden to them, to their family, that's going to probably be a killer right there.
Exactly, and I think we know from a valley perspective, some of those treatment facilities are not throughout the entire valley, and that could be a roadblock for that. And so, we want to try to help overcome that as well.
And your 15 participants, how long have they been actively participating?
Well, they're not... They've come in at different times. We've been doing this since June, I believe, is when we went active on accepting the referrals. So, some of them, we had one that Chief Anderson put in a little bit before we went live, but since then, it's been since June that we've put some individuals into the program. And actually, we just did an update to our city council last night, and Center for Restorative Programs actually provided some qualitative stories as far as the work they're doing with them and the services they're connecting them with. So, if you want, I could have one of them come up and do that, or... Okay.
I was just curious.
Okay.
So, you've been working since June?
Yes, since June. We have 15, and again, it's limited, so if there's any kind of aggravated assault or anything like that, they don't qualify for the program. There's limits on who qualifies, and again, it's at the discretion of officers.
Okay. And I'm curious, I'm assuming that you include entire families? It's not just for the individual? If it's necessary, you include the entire family in the process of, you know, helping them? I'm sure you do.
Well, so if there's other family members that have, for example, an addiction issue, the program would not pay for them to receive counseling. We would be working with that individual for whatever life choices they need to make for that situation, but the funding does not pay.
It doesn't include family counseling and...
It may potentially include that. Family counseling, maybe, but as far as if they have health issues or those types of things, the closest it gets to that is if their person isn't able to maybe get a job because they can't get childcare, it would pay for childcare. But it's all specific to the individual. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sounds good.
No. Sounds like a really interesting program.
Thank you. And needful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, good. So, is that a nod from the council that we can...
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Excellent, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Thanks, guys.
Fennell?
You're up, sir.
Rest of time, huh?
Yeah. So, real quick, I want to... Good evening, ma'am. I want to start off by talking about the Aldridge House. It's been in the paper now for, I don't know, a couple weeks. Really nothing major, got maybe two people kind of looking into it. Our goal was to try to maybe pick it up, have somebody move it somewhere. It's the oldest house in Mona Vista, I guess, my understanding. I don't want it, I don't need it. Probably going to level off that land and probably add on. So, just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that it's been out there. If anybody complains or cries that the oldest house in Mona Vista is getting tore down, well, I'm sorry, it's in the paper. MVMT, I believe, said about $15,000 to pick it up on a crane, put it on a trailer, and move it. Now, that does not include every single power line you got to cross. Okay, so, that's that. Buildings and property that Fennell and Debbie own. I want to clarify a few things. We have them all leased out now, or at least contracts on everything. I met with Ron Douglas, had lunch with him a couple days ago, and I guess I'm just going to be flat-out honest, just because that's pretty much how I am, good, bad, and ugly. I will give Ron Douglas props for two of the properties. He did get Mike Mora in, in the old Scaff's building, and he has American Diesel, I believe, going into the old classic car warehouse. So, basically, my meeting with Ron Douglas was, and he asked me to meet because he's heard a few things that have been said. And so, I want to clarify that. And this is what I told Ron Douglas. It is not Ron Douglas's fault, in my opinion, for getting bashed right now. My opinion is, is I believe it's your guys' fault, because you guys allowed that to happen. Like I said, I'm just going to be flat-out honest. There's a chunk of money going to Ron Douglas. Like I said, not his fault. He's a businessman, he's doing what he's got to do to make money. I hear over and over and over how underpowered, undermanned Chief is. I don't know what we have into Ron Douglas right now. Six months at four grand, and another month at eight grand, I heard. Now, I don't know, I'm just... Whatever it is, there's a chunk of money there. And if I remember correctly, I remember Mr. Johnson sitting somewhere one day saying, "If this marijuana deal doesn't go through, I got people lined up to fill up all these buildings." Well, Mr. Johnson, where are they? I'm just saying, you said it, not me. Yet, we have Ron Douglas trying to put people in the buildings. Okay? Just being honest. That's that. Now, we're going to ask Mr. Trujillo. My understanding, defamation of character has to be written if it's just individual to individual. My understanding is, is if it's business owner, commercial properties, commercial-type stuff, it can be word of mouth, as long as the other person's willing to testify and say, yes, the other person said that. So, I've heard from numerous people that there's council members saying that our rent is ridiculous. So, let's go there. I was here not too long ago, saying free rent for six months. I'm sure you guys all remember that. Okay? Charisma in there for free for 11 months right now. So, there's six months, plus whatever they did, painting, touching up, cleaning, adding, whatever. Charisma's in their building 11 months free. Mike Mora, he's in his building 14 months free. American Diesel is in there six months free right now. He's talked about upgrading new garage doors, maybe some light fixtures. Who knows where he's going to be at the end of the day? He's going to have a chunk of money, and he's going to be in there, I would imagine, a year or more, free. So, I guess I'm here to say, if that doesn't stop, then I will... if that doesn't stop, then I will pursue legal action. If I'm able to, and my understanding is, I can. Fair enough? I feel I'm a pretty nice guy. Not here to bash and slam and kick you guys, but I've even rented to some family members that still owe me money. Somebody sitting up there that their family still owes me money, I understand, that's not you. It's not your issue. All I'm saying is, I'm a pretty nice guy, but I'm getting pretty tired of the crap that's going on. Clear? Questions, comments?
I'm a little confused.
Okay.
When and exactly... Forgive me if my memory doesn't serve me correctly, but I have no recollection of anything that you just said. The other thing that I'm confused about is this council, and myself, and all the people that I know, that have discussed what's going on in this town in terms of business, have always spoke highly of your involvement in trying to get places rented, in trying to get businesses to come into town.
Okay.
Because of your efforts in terms of free rent and that kind of thing.
But yet, on the other hand, they'll speak about how ridiculous my rent is, and I just get them, "Okay, well, you haven't, but I have."
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
All right. And again, in terms of, I've got people lined up to... However, that relates to the marijuana issue. I was against the marijuana issue, but
Right.
Never do, or in lack of any recollection, of saying that I have people lined up. What I have always said is that we need to work very hard at bringing business into this town. Never related it necessarily to the marijuana issue or whatever. Anyhow, the point is that that is why I'm a little confused in terms of everything from legal action to some of the adverse responses and actions that have been made against you. Maybe that's been going on. Hasn't been going on with me, and I haven't heard it from anybody on this council, but...
Well, I didn't pinpoint any one person, did I?
Well, no.
Okay. So if you're not saying anything, then should you be worried about it?
Well, no, my concern is that it's a general statement, that people are saying bad things about you.
Well, I don't want to call anybody out, but if you'd like me to, I will.
Well, that's fine, but you're talking about bringing lawsuits. You can't bring lawsuits against just people in general. I'm just curious. I'm a little...
I guess I'm baffled. Why can I not bring lawsuits? People sue people every day.
Oh, that's... That's fine. I'll just let it be that. I just...
Mike, I mean...
Understand what your complaint is, to be honest.
I don't know that we're going to gain anything here. I mean, I'm not even sure where we're going with this, but it seems to me that, you know, if you've got an opinion about whatever, you kind of stated it, but I'm not sure where this would go. I mean, sometimes people make opinions, and that doesn't mean they can be sued. I mean, if... You know, I would think your rents would be reasonable.
Right. Well, otherwise, I wouldn't have them rented out, right?
Right.
Naturally. But what happens is, here's my concern, is if somebody keeps talking bad about Fennel and Debbie, and if that means renting out a building, and we can't rent it out because of hearsay, because of that hearsay starts getting bigger and bigger and bigger, then that hurts my livelihood.
Well, and it may be, but you've...
Right. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is just, everybody needs to just and leave well enough alone. I'm not here to hurt anybody. I'm here to try to help this community.
And I think that's where everybody's going. And I mean, if you're renting, if your rent's free for six months, that's reasonable, very reasonable. So, but, you know, I think it's awfully tough to figure out if rumors get started, and what happens, and who's at fault, and a lot of times, you know, if somebody makes an opinion that your rent is too high, that may not be, you know, something you can sue somebody about. But nonetheless, I think, from what I can tell from this council since I've been here, is that everybody's wanting to try and get buildings rented, filled up, keep this community going together, because it's not just one individual, it's a group of people that's going to make this community go. You're one of them, you've got property, and I think it's great that we're getting buildings filled up.
Right. No, perfect. I guess there's one last thing that just kind of popped into my head, too, is I had talked to Forrest here a while back about the PD building. I was interested in that building. And my understanding is, is Ron Douglas leased that for a year for X amount of dollars. And I know the lease he's collecting on that is almost double that what he paid for you guys for one year. And he's collecting that every month. There again, not Ron Douglas's fault. I mean, he's collecting almost $1,000 in rent, and I won't say who's paying what, because he's got a few there. But he paid $500 a year. My understanding is, this is just understanding hearsay, because I don't know. But there's an option to buy at the end of that? I think that option cannot be legally, the city cannot do that, without opening it up. So my meeting with Ron Douglas was about all this stuff, and he says, "Well, do you want to buy it?" "Well, I don't know. I asked about it, but nobody ever gave me a price. Next thing I know, you have the option to buy." What am I supposed to say? "Duh, yeah, I want to buy it." "Well, let's sit down, let's talk."
Can I make a point here? He does not have an option to purchase that building. He doesn't.
Okay.
It's leased to him.
My understanding was it was an option. This is what he said. I'm just telling you what Ron said. It was an option. It got changed because this came up. And his conversation with me was, is why are people talking? Well, I'm going to tell you why people are talking, because people have heard that. And that's what he says. "Well, I'm... Why don't they come talk to me?" "Well, I could say the same thing. Why don't you guys come talk to me and ask me about the rent?" Everybody could say the same thing. What I'm saying is, people are mad because of situations not knowing. I'm just saying, I didn't know. My understanding was that. $500 a year, he said it, not me, and I know what he's getting rent out of that. So he makes more in one month than he paid for that rent for the whole year. I mean, for the, yeah, for lease for the whole year. Like I say, now Ron Douglas's fault. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Fennel.
Yep.
Appreciate what you guys do. And the Aldridge House you're talking about is the big house right to the east of your shop, correct?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that for people who may not know.
Yeah.
Okay. We have citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Is there anybody else that has anything? When you come up here, state your name, please.
My name is Josh Barons. Just like to read you a little thing I put together here. Oh, let's start with a joke here, loosen everybody up. "What is bipartisan ship? Well, that's when Republicans and Democrats kowtow, fawn, and woo the same special interests." I thought it was pretty funny, anyway. "This issue of quid pro quo. I scratch your election campaign back, and you scratch mine, by voting in the interest of business profit, that is the passing of legislative law. This defines our age. And I was most excited about moving out to Montavista because of the serene landscapes, the low populations, and the clean mountain country water, not the sickly city sludge. But lo and behold, mining companies have degraded the pristine flourish even above 8,000 feet. This motive, the key here, of profit over ideals and the interests of the general population, is destroying our republic by disregarding the fundamental rights of society and people. $10,500 campaign contributions to both Bennett and Gardner have quelled their ability to thwart the very unhuman business interests of companies like Time Warner, Comcast, Verizon, weapons manufacturers like Lockheed Martin, and globalized banking and investment conglomerates. All these people are donating to both of these politicians. The simple aspect of increased access to a politician's ear, the need for politicians to make cold calls for donations from the economic elite, degrades the foundational aspect of a republic, of one person and one vote. Unlimited super PAC spending, on the other hand, looks to inculcate and unfairly sway voters via a rule that lacks all common sense, that corporate entities are entitled to constitutional and fundamental rights of citizens, of people. Lobbying efforts and bills written by globalized corporations have flooded our government, our government of and by the people, in order to skirt national law designed to protect us. First Amendment protection granted to entities designed for the sole purpose of profit have allowed wholly unscrupulous acts of engineering and manipulative elections for the purpose of increased legislative control. Over 80% of Americans polled say too much money is in politics. 82% is a bipartisan issue. This transcends party lines. We must act if it is not already too late to save our republic. Look at the mode of profit this way. I sold furniture for about five months, five months too long. I was literally trained to employ manipulative language to coerce customers to buy more. Think about this cotton that's grown in this country, and it's shipped to Indochina to manufacture T-shirts, and then the T-shirts are shipped back here for sale for just a little bit more money. The filter imposed by the profit structure sifts decisions and cares not for interests of wholesome communities or healthy children, but instead peddles neon orange corn snacks and sugar-based drinks to six, seven, eight, nine-year-olds. Across the country, from both left and right, people are demanding local, state, and federal legislation to protect our government from the special interests, not of people, but of legal entities that were first defined and created to separate the liability from the owner. We call them limited liability corporations. This movement will culminate, hopefully, in 2021 with the 28th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution that would, in essence, overturn the disastrous decisions of Citizens United versus the FEC. The succinct wording of this amendment will be determined by the people, because that is who powers this movement. And just a couple of talking points, you know, we deserve free and fair elections. We're going to bring the people together to deliberate what the amendment should say. There are several versions that have already been introduced to the House, to the U.S. House. Again, it's bipartisan, but we have systematic corruption. It's pretty clear. I think everybody agrees, unless you're, you know, like I said, inculcated. So it's local legislation on this issue. 19 states, including Colorado, and 800 communities have enacted 28th Amendment resolutions. Just to finish up, Obama spent $700 million, nearly $700 million in a second campaign. Where, you know, where could we put that money? Thank you. Thank you for having me. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with comments? Resolutions. Forrest, are you going to lead on these?
Yes, sir, I think I will. I'm going to try to use technology this time. I'm Chinese, I'm Korean. Well, the new used Korean. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in front of you this evening have Resolution Number 12-2018, a resolution adopting a city of Montavista code of conduct for elected officials and appointed members of boards and commissions. Rather than going into a super-long thing, I'd actually like to read the first two whereas tonight. So it basically describes the intent, and one line from the third whereas, and then it gets into the detail. But the city charter provides detailed information on the roles and responsibilities of council members, Mayor Protam and the mayor. The city's code of ethics within municipal code provides guidance on ethical issues and questions of right and wrong. This document is provided to provide a code of conduct for Montavista's elected officials and their appointed board and commissions. This code of conduct is designed to describe the manner in which council members and their appointed board and commission members should treat one another, city staff, constituents, and others that they come into contact when representing the city of Montavista. It reflects the work of the city council, all defining more clearly the behavior, manners, and courtesies that are suitable for various occasions. The constant and consistent theme through all of the conduct guidelines contained therein is respect. So based upon the desire of the city council, we've been working on this for a while. It's kind of taken a bit of time to put together both this resolution and then the further ordinance in the meeting tonight. I would request the council approve this. If you have any questions about the resolution itself, I'd be happy to answer it.
Well, I've been through it and compared it to some of the other resources we had, and it seems pretty plainly succinct and something that we need to do.
I've read, sir, that it's pretty straightforward and honest and important. I appreciate everyone's work on it. And something really necessary for this council, I think, and every council, not just us, but...
Well, I knew that we adopt Resolution Number 12-2018 as presented.
I would second that motion.
Moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 12-2018, code of conduct for elected officials and appointed members of boards and commissions. Is there any more discussion?
I'd just like to thank Forrest and the staff, the hard work they put into it, reading through the examples that you gave us, oh my gosh, last spring, and what you put together. I think it's a good piece of work, and thank you for doing that.
It's a lot of work and effort.
Nita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathar?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So next on the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, is Resolution 13-2018, a resolution opposing Amendment 74, an attempt to amend the Colorado Constitution to drastically limit state local government services at high cost to taxpayers. As you all are aware, under your packets this evening, there's communication from Colorado Municipal League, which has basically done a good analysis on Amendment 74. Part of the discussion under Amendment 74 is the broad manner in which it is actually written. Essentially, what it would do to the cities and towns and counties is that the potential liability that it would create for us and the taxpayer's money is that anytime, let's take a simple example, a zoning change. As broadly as this is written, both the people that have a positive, if someone, you change zoning. So for instance, the community currently is discussing chickens. Okay? And I'm not sure where that's going to go. And, you know, there's a lot of road to go, planning commission, before you all see it. But let's say, for instance, if this amendment was passed the Constitution, and you pass an ordinance that allows people to have chickens in residential, highly regulated chickens, but chickens nonetheless, then an affected property owner in that area could potentially file a lawsuit against the city for loss of property. At the same time, if this was to pass, if the citizens brought forth an issue, which they did, the chickens, and a proposed ordinance for consideration, and you deny that, that too could be seen as a loss of property rights. too could be seen a loss, as a loss of property rights. So, it's not, it's so broadly written that the liability potential is kind of beyond measure. And that's basically CML's position on this, and I believe it should be the city's as well, and that's why we brought forth this resolution, which is based off of a draft provided by CML. You know, it's just too broad. There's certainly just a lot of pitfalls for big communities, small communities, you know, because when, you know, we have liability insurance companies, yeah, that's great. Our premiums are not only based upon our exposure as our community, but it's a pool, right? Sursa is a pool. So, if lawsuits, if this passed and lawsuits mounted to a large degree, our premiums would go up, and those are paid for by the taxpayers. And it's not an inexpensive component to be part of the pool or any kind of liability insurance, but as we see skyrocketing costs and everything else, including things like healthcare, it could break the bank, literally, and make it difficult for us to afford any kind of liability coverage, and would create inertia. So, staff would certainly recommend that you pass this resolution this evening.
I wanted to comment about that. I spoke with Sam, yeah, Mamet, Mamet, I'm sorry, Executive Director, CML, and we, I made the comment to him that it would appear that if something like this passed, there would be pretty much a pass on just about any kind of legislation that ever came up. And so, very little would ever get done in order to maintain the protection of the city and the city budget and everything else. He responded to that by saying that it not only would cut back on legislation that we need to advance the cause of the city wherever, and for the people, but inaction by deciding not to pursue something because of the liability that could potentially be involved results in the same scenario. In other words, you're reluctant to pass legislation because of the liability, but if you don't pass some legislation, it can be construed that by not, not passing that legislation, now I've got a claim against the city because that, by not, by inaction. Anyhow, the point is that it, no matter what you do, to quote Mr. Mamet, damn if you do and damn if you don't, we've already got enough liability issues that restrain us. I could name some amendments that are currently in place, but I'll restrain myself from going into all that. But nonetheless, that's just a, not only a personal view, but a professional one as well.
We need to have a motion in place.
I move to accept Resolution Thirteen Twenty-eight, Twenty-Eighteen, opposing Amendment Seventy-four.
Second. Moved and seconded, that we accept Resolution Thirteen dash Two Zero One Eight, opposing Amendment Seventy-four. Is there any more discussion? Nita.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll turn this over to Nita.
So, in your pack, actually, it's not in your packet, this was an amendment to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, is to add Resolution Number Fourteen Two dash Two Zero One Eight, and that's a resolution opposing Proposition One Twelve, that is the setback requirement for oil and gas development. This is also something that is being pushed through with CML. Proposition One Twelve is in statute if requires, it requires new oil and natural gas development, not on federal land, to be located at least two thousand five hundred feet from an occupied structure. So, that is something that CML has asked for us to also kind of push through. So, in front of you, you have Resolution Fourteen dash Two One Eight in opposition of Proposition One Twelve. And there is handouts in the back.
I would prefer to have time to look into this one before I vote on it.
And, and that's, that's it, council's discretion, we can put this on the next agenda as well.
So, would that be a motion to table, councilor?
I make a motion to table Resolution Fourteen Two, Twenty-Eighteen until the next meeting, so we can have time to look into this.
Been moved to table, moved to table, moved and seconded to table, Fourteen dash Two Zero One Eight until the next meeting.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next resolution is Fifteen dash Twenty-Eighteen, which you may also wish to table until the next meeting, but is, it is an endorsing of Proposition One Ten. Proposition One Ten is a statutory change seeks to increase the state sales tax rate by point six-two percent as a dedicated funding string for state, municipal, county, and for the transportation infrastructure. What this proposition would do is for the HUTF funds, the highway users' funds that counties and cities receive, if this proposition passes, then cities and counties will receive double the HUTF funds that they currently receive now.
And what is the tax rate increase?
Point six-two percent, about a six cents on a ten-dollar purchase.
So, very minimal investment for a pretty good return to cities and counties, right?
That is correct.
I mean, that's my understanding. I did actually do a little bit of reading about that one.
And, you know, our public works director actually knows a lot more about this proposition. Unfortunately, he's out working on some waterline right now, so, so if you're at your discretion, you may wish to table that as well, or you can vote on this resolution this evening, endorsing Proposition Ten.
Again, I would prefer to table it so that I can research it before I vote on it.
For a motion, councilor?
I move to table Resolution Fifteen Twenty-Eighteen until the next meeting, so we can have time to look into this resolution.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to table Resolution Fifteen dash Two Zero One Eight, endorsing Proposition One Ten. No more discussion?
Yeah, this one seems like a no-brainer, but I tend to agree. What I know about it, very positive, but it can't hurt to take some time.
Any more well-being?
Yeah. Aaron.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, I will get that information out to you all for the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nita.
Evening again. This will be the second part of our Code of Ethics efforts of the evening. This is ordinance Number Eight Eight Eight, an ordinance to amend Montevista Municipal Code, Section Two Administration, to create a new section of code adding Article Twelve in its entirety, Article Twelve Code of Ethics. And so, basically, this is as we discussed with the council as well. This actually codifies ethical conduct, both by officials and employees of the city. This would be on its first reading this evening. It provides an opportunity for both elected officials through the actions of the mayor and the city attorney, or for elected, or for employees of the city through the actions of the city manager, to be held to these standards. I don't know if you have any particular questions on this beyond what we've previously discussed, but I'll be happy to take those.
When I read through that, it looked like the amendment to the municipal code was considerably condensed. Is that intended, or are we amending exactly what the resolution said, Twelve dash Two Eighteen, Twenty-Eighteen?
To clarify that, councilor, the resolution is an entirely separate document, so we now have, would have three documents, one discodification piece, which will be codified exactly as written in this ordinance. The prior resolution is a document unto itself that, you know, provides guidance, but isn't codified, although it create, has many of the same concepts that are in the codified version. It's much broader, if you will, in this description of particular activities, as opposed to a codifying piece, which is generally more condensed, but it would create a guiding document for implementation of this piece of the code.
So, it carries the same weight as the, as the...
Well, the code obviously creates, being codified, it becomes a rule or law of the city. The resolution then would be like the playbook, like we have in our code, there's an employee handbook, one paragraph. Employee handbook is forty-seven or fifty-seven pages currently. So, that creates the detail then that can relate to complaints that would then be codified, and this actually codifies penalties, well, for violations of the Code of Ethics.
Well, I'm going to read up ordinance Eight 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 as presented, amending the Montevista Municipal Code, Section Two, adding Article Twelve Code of Ethics.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept ordinance Eight Eight Eight, amending Montevista Municipal Code, Section Two, adding Article Twelve Code of Ethics. No more discussion. Nita.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that.
Do you have one more? Well, actually, the next ordinance was drafted by the city attorney and the city clerk, so I'll let one of them address that.
Mayor, council, thank you. This amendment to our code regarding marijuana really, I think the chief is probably directly responsible for, he's the impetus behind it, I believe. I mean, he wanted it in there, I think it was needed. It may have been that a few violations were charged without us even maybe having that in there. So, we need to get it straightened out, and I, I, you know, think everybody's on board with the ordinance. And probably the chief will be talking to you about some of the studies that have come out about marijuana and things like that, and what it may lead to, and I'm sure you're going to get into that a little bit more, but the nuts and bolts of this ordinance is basically to, our code really didn't have anything to do with the underage possession or consumption by, by people under the age. And so, I've set it forth as a bit of an emergency ordinance due to the cases, many cases of young people under the age using and possessing marijuana, so, and if the council believes that it's somewhat of an emergency for the benefit of the citizens, then it can go on and be amended, I mean, be amended today and be in place. And the gist of this is it's unlawful for any person under the age of twenty-one years to possess or consume one ounce or less of marijuana in the city. And that kind of keeps it, to some degree, as a minor type of offense. If it gets any more serious than that, it'd probably go to a different court. And in, in doing this, I think a lot of folks, whether it be alcohol or whether it be marijuana, probably a lot of this would be referred by the judge to different agencies that would help these kids, as opposed to hammering them with fines and that kind of thing. I think community service and some of the programs is where we're trying to get, get these kids to before they get too far along and, and things get serious, so. But I do think it's something that isn't in our code, I think it's something that's needed. With it being in the code, we could cite young folks that are picked up by the officers and maybe get them some help into some of the programs like you heard about tonight. So, I guess I would, on behalf of myself and the chief, urge the council to pass the ordinance. Any questions?
We just currently don't address that. It's never been included as part of what we do.
No, it kind of goes all around the issue, but it's not, not in there.
Probably an oversight.
Probably an oversight, yeah.
Maybe the code was passed before marijuana was an issue.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know, but it's not in there, and it's something we just need to think, get in there. Thank you.
Need a motion?
I move that we accept the emergency ordinance Eight Eight Nine, amending Article Ten, Section Eight Dash Ten Dash Twenty, offenses relating to marijuana, adding Section Eight Dash Ten Dash Twenty D, underage possession of marijuana. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we put ordinance Eight Eight Nine, amending Article Ten, Section Eight Dash Ten Dash Twenty, offenses relating to marijuana, adding Section Eight Dash Ten Dash Twenty D, underage possession of marijuana. Is there any more discussion? Nita.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you guys for working on those. City Montevista Project substantial completion letter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Back in two thousand and ten, the city knew that it was facing water augmentation issues. We didn't really know to what extent those would be because the state had not drafted the water rules, which are not fully adopted for the valley, but nonetheless, the rules themselves have been heard by the water court. I don't believe there's a final ruling at this time, but within reason, we understand what we need. As you know, we've been, I believe, we had our water attorneys come down and talk to the council about where we stand. We filed our case for augmentation, so that is sitting on the docket after the water rules themselves, whatever happens with them. Hopefully, we get in front of water court. I believe we have a date next year, like a year from now or so. In any case, at that time, we borrowed a one point six-nine-three million dollars to buy water rights. So, in addition to our confined aquifer wells, the deep wells, we also bought surface rights, or ditch rights, if you will. We have, the ditch rights are part of our augmentation plan. We have, the ditch rights are part of our augmentation plan, but it appears, based upon the work of both our water engineers and our water attorneys, that we have adequacy. And of course, that's up to the court to decide, but when the rules came out, we were able to see, starting two years ago or so, that because of one of the really smart things your predecessors did, which was get water meters installed, that actually saved the day as far as this water augmentation goes. The way that the state calculates it, and I'll try not to go ad nauseam about this, even though it's pretty interesting, but there's a graph that shows our high water usage. And we're using all this water, and then water meters came in, and this always happens, the water usage went down. Well, the time period that the state looks at historic water usage was there, up at the top. And so when we reduced our consumption, we actually gained credits. In the simplest form, that was super beneficial. So Colorado Water Conservation Board's been bugging me for two years about, hey, you know, what are you guys, are you guys done purchasing water? And two years ago, I didn't have an answer. After talking to our water attorneys and our water engineers, I believe that we are in a good place as far as that goes. The Water Conservation Board also said, well, you know, if something comes up and you do need to get some more, you can reapply, and it wouldn't really be an issue, but we'd like to close this loan out and get it off of our books. So we had some discussions over the last couple of months on how this would work, and essentially was able to negotiate the interest that's accrued on the loan from inception to date to be rolled into the actual principal of the loan. So to close this out in this manner, we would actually, would start our first payment a year from September, and we actually end up with less principal than the original loan was. So we'd have an annualized payment of $94,110.36 for thirty years, at a four percent interest It's a pretty solid deal for the city, as far as, one, getting this closed out, the state's happy with our, the Colorado Water Conservation Board is happy with the approach. And so essentially, what I'm asking you all this evening is to approve the mayor signing off on, there's amended loan contract and note. And so the reason I'm bringing this to you this evening is for you to approve, the mayor to sign those documents. It gives us then a set budgeting amount for next year, which is included in the 2019 budget for that payment, and it kind of gives us unknown certainty. We really don't know, and we're going to go to water court. I mean, we hope, we do have a scheduled date, you know how that works, right? So this gives us some surety of, one, what we have to pay back, and kind of of our position. And I do believe our position is good. You know, sans anything really strange happening in water court, we should be fine with our, in fact, we have enough credits in our plan that we can do some exchanges and stuff. So I think we're pretty healthy there, and I would certainly ask the council to approve the mayor signing those documents. Need a motion now, or just a nod? I think a voice vote would be appropriate, sir.
Here. It's a bitter pill, but I would certainly, you know, much of that is choice, we have to approve. I would be favorable.
Was that the form of the motion, sir?
Was that a motion?
Oh, did you want to make it?
Yeah, I think we get a motion.
Oh, I think we just wanted a nod. I, I move that we accept the, no, what we're approving here is the note itself.
The notice of substantial completion and the mayor's signature on the modified contract and note.
Good, I so move.
Second that motion.
Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segula?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Do you have any more to add?
I wish this was just a little bit taller, or I was a little bit shorter. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to present the August 31st, 2018 financials. So in your packets, you guys should have a copy of what I'm going to kind of go over, and just kind of touch on a couple of high points, if you all are okay with that. I'll start off with the general fund, as far as revenues go. As of August 31st, we're at 67% of the budget year. Revenues are coming in at 78%, and I had kind of mentioned last month when I presented financials that we're sitting good, we look good, but as the year goes on, you know, we're going to see a decrease in revenues, because the major portion of our revenues comes from property taxes, and as you guys know, those taper off towards the end of the year. So we're currently at a little bit over 1.3 million in tax revenues in the general fund. Expenditures are right on target, we're at 62% of the approved budget. Our largest portion continues to be part of the police department, they have $778,000 and some change in expenditures as of August 31st. In the general fund, currently our expenditure, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures by $364,673, which is adding to our fund balance, which is great, that's what we, we want, because we need to get through the last four or five months of the year, so. The other thing that I kind of want to bring to light is, you know, we just approved our budget amendments, they are not reflected in these numbers, because they didn't take place until September, so those will be in the next presentation. Moving on to the water fund, our revenues are at 84%, which is great, of the approved budget. The majority of the amount relates to our services, which is $686,246. Expenditures are at 51% of the approved budget in the water fund, or $562,000, and it's, it continues to stay split evenly between administration and the water supply department, so not a big, not a big shocker there. As of August 31st, the unrestricted cash for the water fund is a little over $1 million, so. The revenues exceed expenditures in the water fund by $161,652, which increases the fund balance to a little over 1.9 million. In the sewer fund, revenues as of August 31st are a little bit down, they're only at 47%, so, just kind of is what it is. Majority of the amount relates, obviously, revenue is from services, coming in at $655,000. Expenditures, luckily, are staying on target with revenues, they're at 41%, so they're still, there's, we're still okay there, our revenues are greater than our expenditures, it's just not what we thought it was going to be, so. As of August 31st, the unrestricted cash for the sewer fund totals $558,718, and the expenditures are still exceeding the revenues in our sewer fund by $22,738, which is decreasing the fund balance a little bit, to 3.9, a little over 3.9 million, so. Again, the water and sewer funds are the same as the general funds, you won't see the budget amendments reflected in there, because they didn't take place until September, so. If you don't have anything else for me, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forrest? Always enjoy this, because we've covered most of the things in my report already, so. Just a couple of quick reminders, actually, I have this evening, and one request. Once again, we have an October 9th workshop to discuss local business assist and neighborhood watch in the PD. So those are the two topics for that evening of October 9th. And then October 16th is our budget work session, and the department heads will be here to answer questions, you'll have copies of the draft budget in advance, giving you all a few heads up, and then we'll kind of work through it, see if you have particular questions about departments. And then I'd also like the council to consider, on Monday, December 10th, holding a work session, if it's a special work session, I have a memo, but it'd just be a work session. CML Executive Director Sam Nemeth is going to be in the valley, and he'd love to have the opportunity to meet you all, so. Probably wouldn't be a super long work session, but, you know, Sam is, you know, if you haven't met him, he's really an amazing individual, and has done great year, great work, and he's going to be retiring next year, and I can't remember, Nita, how many years has he been there? Forty? So forty years. So he's done a really great job with that organization, and I think he will impart you with some words of wisdom. So other than that, unless you have any questions for me, that's all I'm going to have. Might be a little delayed, they're backfilling the water, part of the water project, I think they're about done. Ran into a few inherent issues, and if he gets here, he can tell you about them. Little budget note is that we do have in our, in the water and sewer budgets next year, the GIS project that was described in our water efficiency plan, and the issues that they ran into today will be partially resolved through that project. You know, we have maps, and if you've never had a tour of our water and sewer maps, they're old, and they have some inaccuracies, and actually, I was out at the job site today, and water line was supposed to be in one location and go across Lariat, and they dug it up, and it was actually offset by a few feet, and the pipe did not go across Lariat there. I think they found later where it was, but at that point, it was kind of interesting. And the project they're working on today is valve, a valve replacement project, so that later, if any of you remember from a couple of years ago, the fountain next to Lariat, west of Broadway, yeah, so that line will be going away, but in advance of that, there was, you know, a bunch of valves that, in fact, the one that I was looking at was dug up, the valve actually was broken, which is not a great thing. So we are, you know, continuing to address those issues within our budget, but certainly the GIS thing will be helpful, and Bob took a lot of GIS-related photos today, so then when we get the system, that could be input in there, so we have some starting exact locations, so.
Nice.
That's all I have.
Is all the water still up to that side of town? They got the water?
The majority of the water is on now. I think there's maybe a couple residences that were affected, they should be, they're backfilling, so they should be on as well.
Okay.
But they had a problem seeding, seeding a pipe about five o'clock, where it wasn't quite seeding right, so, but apparently they had it resolved, so. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Mr. Trigill? Mayor, Councilor, thank you. Be somewhat short and sweet, hopefully. I, I wanted to really kind of thank Forrest for this code, I mean, he did a lot of work on that, and he sends me an awful lot of paper, and we're burning up trees, but there's a lot of stuff to review, and a lot of things that, you know, by the time they get to you folks, there's been a lot of work put in, a lot of these projects, and so, I mean, for my money, the Forrest, and the clerk, Nita, and the chief, kind of make a lot of my job fairly easy, and even the judge here, she's, not to leave her out.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I really think sometimes nobody gets enough credit when it's due, and they, they make me look good, so I appreciate that. And there's a lot of, lot of stuff that I review from Forrest, our agreement on our settlement of our case, I mean, all those things come through, and I try and look at all that stuff, and if I see an issue, I'll let somebody know, or if somebody sees an issue, they'll let me know, and so I, I do appreciate the folks I work with. Generally, I'll try and, with the chief, we did, I did an agreement with him on Crime Stoppers, and I think that's going to be something he'll put in place, hopefully very quickly, and then the, the marijuana issue, he kind of was instrumental in getting that going, and I think that's going to be helpful, he wants me to take a look at, if we didn't have enough problems with cat, with dogs, we're going to maybe see what we can do with cats now, and I don't know if that's possible to control them, but I'm going to do some looking at that. The, we had a fairly busy day in court the other day, and, you know, they're fairly manageable, but there are things that go on, and they're busy, and, but, you know, again, Nita gets me reports from people on pre-trials, and so like, things were pretty darn good, and, and we managed to move a lot of people through the courts, and with, you know, Nita's help and the judge's help, I mean, things just seemed to be going pretty good, so. I'm okay with that, and I think things, you know, overall are going pretty darn good here, from my viewpoint. I don't really have anything else, other than, you know, we just try and get as many things done as we can for every meeting, and keep the, keep the wheels rolling, so. If anybody has any specific questions that I can address, be glad to do it.
Not a one. Thank you for your work.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief Rose Grant?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Any questions from last report? I wasn't here last meeting, so. Good. This, I'm going to try to go fairly just straight, you know, we're a cop with a cop yesterday, National Observance Day, we kept it going all year, so I think it's been fun, it's been good, I'm not going to quit doing it, I'm just trying to figure out a way to change it up. I don't know if we're going to change venues, change times, I would be open to recommendations, I would be open to partners, whatever you might want to do to get more voices out there, and have more one-on-one connections with the community, so think about that, I'm thinking about it, and we have a meeting on the 9th, maybe that can come up as part of our Neighborhood Watch general discussion. I don't, I'm not saying I don't want to stop the copy with the cop, but I definitely want to maybe re, relook at how we can, we're averaging fifteen to twenty participants, that's not bad at all, however, I do think there's some restrictions on working, you know, working folks, they can, our biggest day, single day, was I think forty, and it was 4th of July.
Yeah, that was a whole.
So I think maybe there's something to be said there, maybe we change it up and get a different, different options for folks. I know evenings are, you know, just full of stuff, but maybe we could do lunch, or we could do a weekend thing, or just.
Is there breakfast that's earlier that working people might be able to?
We could do maybe shorter, but earlier.
Yeah.
Maybe think about it for next Tuesday or, or 9th, because it kind of flows in with the Neighborhood Watch concept as well. But it went well, I didn't attend yesterday, but two of my sergeants did, and another officer, so that was kind of the focus of National Day, it was less of a discussion with the chief, as it was just, hey, here's my individual problem, or getting to know your officer, so it was changing it up a little bit on purpose. And then Neighborhood Watch, just a reminder, the meeting on the 15th is on there, Crime Stoppers, reminder of the next board meeting is on the 29th, just a reminder. Crime Stoppers really kind of taking on its own, Mark Lef, the, got our vice president here, we have all new, new staff, and thank you to Counselor Lorenz there, working chief. We have all new, new staff and thank you to the councilors, the Rins there at work. She got the bulk of the actual work. We used to get her to talk about it.
I don't know about that. I think Nikki's doing really well.
Yeah, so we're getting there. They got some excitement. We're working on a website and, well, hopefully that'll come out pretty quick and we'll get everybody to take a look at that and maybe kind of roll that into a Neighborhood Watch thing as well. But hopefully everything goes well. We're, the one hour a day at the school is kind of blowing up on us. We're, school has been, we've definitely been there an hour, we've been there more than an hour. It's been, I guess it's that first few weeks of school and the craziness that comes with that. So we're, we're definitely getting in our hour a day. Not exactly how I planned it, but it's working, I guess. You've probably heard of HIDA. Remember, may not even know what it is, but Rocky Mountain HIDA, it's the High Intensity Drug Trafficin' Area Consortium. They work together on statistics and plans and, you know, how to work together, inter-agency, interstate, you know, national. But the timing is good and we're a little bit out of order, but if you look at what's attached, I, I kind of want to bring it up for two reasons. I actually made copies, so if anybody here wants to look at it. I'm only going to go over a few points, but the executive summary of that, basically initiative, the first data that's really significantly come out of the legalization, especially the retail legalization is not good. It's probably what most of you would like to say you predicted. I'd like to take, say the same. I mean, I didn't know, but I didn't like the concept. And I'll just highlight a few things in each, each section. One, the fatalities. I think the recreational legalization took a person dying every two and a half days in Colorado, or to, from six and a half days to two and a half days. So we experience a traffic death with every two and a half days now. Directly related, says HIDA, since the legalization, retail legalization of marijuana. And there's a couple of statistics that, that lead you to believe that they're on to something. When 151% increase in marijuana-related deaths and marijuana, the percentage of Colorado traffic deaths showing that there was some sort of direct increase went up 11, basically 10%, a little over 10% from 11 to 21%. So it's, it's all in that first section. I think the section two, the marijuana use, the juveniles is, is the worst news and I think that's what actually everybody predicted, that we were going to have a really hard time with kids. We have a hard enough time with alcohol, driving, all those things that we learn slowly as adults or as humans. We're not good at that. We're not, we're not designed to, to learn in a hurry. And guess what? We make a lot of mistakes when we're young. But Colorado, past month, so they asked, they asked young people, in the past month, have you used? They went just 12 years of age and younger and now we're ranked third in the state in that category with an 85% higher than the national average. So there's a lot of, a lot of marijuana use in our youth. Publicly, like a public, general health standpoint, the yearly rate of emergency department visits related to marijuana increased 52% since the legalization in 2012. That can't be healthy. That just doesn't sound right. The black market, Forrest had asked for, basically to allow us to take some black market money from the state. I'm not going to go into those, but the numbers speak for themselves. The, the closet industry, even, even our own growers here locally have just been insane. There's a lot going on that we can't do anything about because of how clandestine they can be and the fact that it can be masked by the legal. It's, it's very hard to kind of get under the legal surface of what you can do to get into what's really being done. And those numbers are reflected. The number of, the amount of marijuana leaving the state and the felony arrest related to it and all those statistics are right there. And I think the last one, I think you guys, you know, council and the city manager and just the government in general of this city need to pat themselves on the back, is you're, you're in a select group, you think, but you're really not. You're among the majority of small towns and townships that said no. 65% said no. So again, it's kind of, kind of one of those things that's misrepresented. The larger, unique, larger populations kind of run the show and, you know, it's, I think it's, it says a lot for, for the city to, to say no, especially with some of our financial issues and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I thought this was helpful, given what probably will come with your position. And I don't know if this is something that you guys see a lot of, but I put the, I put the website on there for you and it, there's a lot of information on it. So if it ever does come down to, hey, why are you doing what you're doing, well, it's out there now. And that's kind of cool. It's their fifth, their fifth update, but this is the first time I think they, I've seen that they put significant statistics and numbers because they had time. You know as well as I do, we're looking at 14 statistics, you know, years later. So it's, 2012 started and here we're in 2018 and they don't, I think it ended in 16, so we're already two years behind. So, any questions on any of that?
No, I was just curious. It was like three years ago, in the youth division, the, the two largest school districts in the state opted out and they didn't participate in that survey. So even though these numbers are higher, they don't actually reflect the numbers coming out of the two largest school districts in the state.
And it's all voluntary. Have you, you know, have you used in the last three days or, you know, how accessible is marijuana? So it, it probably.
These numbers are much higher.
Way, yeah.
And there's a youth, there's a youth impact that comes out in January. We're used to and I didn't, I checked this year for that one.
Well, I thought the state patrol took initiative to, the state opted to test every blood DUI for a full panel. And I think it was 76 or 78% of every blood panel DUI tested positive for another substance, whether it be marijuana, heroin, cocaine, any of the illicit and legal drug. That's fairly telling as well.
And so that was across the state?
Yeah, that was every state trooper participated. Every DUI that, that chose blood was tested for all active, you know, hallucinogens, all that, anything that would impair their driving. I think it was 70, 76 or 78% and nearly eight out of 10 people had some concoction going on as opposed to just alcohol, which makes it really hard on lung. But we're, Judge and I have had a lot of talkers about this because we're in a really tough spot with marijuana. We're trying to, we're trying to basically work a marijuana stop like we work alcohol and we don't know how to do that. It's not the same thing. So we're doing a really bad job, but we're trying really hard. But until we have some sort of standard feel sobriety test for us to say, okay, or we have, you know, the silver bullets that's breathing into this, you know, which never has really come out for alcohol either. It's still about driving and the impairment shown, dividing their attention. It's really tough with marijuana. Plus, I think the realities of what we're going to call impaired are going to be different. I don't think what marijuana does to you is the same as what alcohol does. It's not the same animal, you know? So I really think that in the next two years, maybe even, maybe it'll take as many as five years to make much of a difference in that. Drug-related arrests are very tough and DREs struggle. And a drug recognition expert takes months of schooling and I think 25 or 30 actual audited evaluations of a person that is under the influence of something. So you have a master instructor that watches you evaluate somebody and then they grade you and you have to pass a certain percentage of them. So I mean, cops on the street, we don't, we don't have anywhere near that ability to train, practice, to go to school, to understand, you know, the five classes of drug and how they react. And so it's just going to be really tough to figure out what we do. Not to digress with driving, but that's, I, to me, that's where these deaths are coming from. Yes, we have an opioid problem. We also have as many, every two and a half days, we lose somebody in a traffic accident in the state, which is every few minutes in the country. So it's, it's, you know, it's, we talk about murders, we talk about all those really nasty crimes. We lose more people in traffic by far and yet we get bait up for working traffic. So it's, it's a bizarre quandary that we're in. You don't see the statistics quite this obvious sometimes and I thought that was very unique and Forrest's, yeah, talk about it. That's pretty cool. For standing your ground, crime reports in there, so unless, I saw one really cool thing, burglaries, I hate to even jinx myself, but we had two and we solved one. So that's 50% clearance and they were low. Everything else is about the same. I know, shh, they're probably in my house right now.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah, won't go on these stats, okay. This, I, if you can see the crime map or the camera map and you pack it, I apologize for the rudimentary, but we did this in a hurry. Forrest and I would kind of like to ask for permission to draft up an agreement with SLV REC to move forward the cameras. Our thought was, you know, Lauren Howard said, hey, here's what we want to do and everybody seemed to think it was a good idea. So we just wanted to make sure that the grass didn't start to grow. So I, Forrest just kind of said, hey, shoot out there your thoughts. Overask and Lauren actually recommended that I do that. So I prioritized one, two and three, and then the location. So my, my general thought was to try to go in order of safety and then property damage. So I think the ones are the highest potential for us to, to provide public safety and to maybe prove damage to property, à la accidents and those kind of things. The twos, same thing, just a little less travel, a little less traffic, little easier sometimes to prove, red light cameras are very effective and I don't mean that in the sense of violation. I mean, just knowing what happened at, at an intersection when party A and party B have a completely different story and you had a big, you know, traffic jam, not to mention the hit and runs, the trucks that might do things, you know, the hazmat stuff. I mean, if we have a multi-million dollar hazmat bill and somebody wants to deny it, it'd be awful nice to go, really? You're going to deny that? Because it's a pretty good camera and it's real time. So that was our thoughts and if you have any objections, please let us know, otherwise we're going to ask for, ask for the moon.
And get it.
No, the West Side got a little bit, a little bit ignored, but kind of on, on purpose for now. I think we're on to something with, with this kind of concept and who knows where it ends. And you look at London on one extreme where you, you can't move without being on camera to, to us with none, I think somewhere in, that's probably where we're all headed. Unfortunately, the percentage of bad guys have much more cameras than the good guys.
That's right.
Maybe it's not for us to catch up a little bit. But there's no objections, we would like to ask the city attorney to help us draft up some more paper, kill some more trees and talk to.
I think that'd be a great idea to go and move forward.
Do we need anything official motion and all that?
Just a head nod.
Just a head nod.
All right, well, thank you.
Is this the one question about that, Chief, is, is this kind of the limit of the numbers?
It's three times what probably we're going to get.
Really? Okay. That's what I was.
What we, like you said.
Because I put them, you know, everywhere.
Absolutely. We, I can almost guarantee from Lauren's mouth, we have the ones and probably part of the twos, or we could even take one, two and one, three. Because I focused on the high school, the skate park and then the downtown. That was kind of the thoughts. And if the, and when it comes down to it, if, you know, we'll just, Lauren and, and Forrest will just pick. But I do think the ones have to go. But those are the, that's what we're going to probably get the most bang for our buck when it comes to saving some money from a liability or a lawsuit or, you know, something major or we have. I think that's a really good way to block people in. So if we have a homicide and somebody runs, you know, there's only a couple of ways to get out of town, you know, unless you're on the ends and then you can't do much about it. So hopefully that'll get them trying to leave town. If we have a car at the right time and the right description, maybe a good way to, to work some stuff.
Just a quick thought, anything down by Sky High Complex?
Yes. The fiber's going to end there. So I, I'm hoping that we make this a really good partnership and by the time they get to the east side of town, they're already here, so, but we did kind of neglect this side of town as well. But yes, I do think as, my thought would be, and I talked to Forrest a little bit about this, as we rebuild the complex, we incorporate maybe that into the rebuilding and then ask for a little help with the service, which is much, you know, much cheaper on a monthly basis than it is that, that initial running of fiber. Because I can, we, we almost guarantee there'll be some infrastructure upgrades as well as that complex begins to grow. But yes, it needs to be a height, but maybe a little further down the road. That was all. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on that?
No.
So just internally, we, we're still trying to hire, but it's not getting done too well. We do have some applicants, but we've been kind of background checking them, hasn't worked out so good. Code enforcement, Shane's doing an amazing job. He's really pushing hard, you know, talked about cats and dogs and he, you know, it's kind of his passion with the, the dogs. One of the biggest frustrations he's running into right now is when he tries to research anything, there's no data and dogs aren't, they're not, a lot of them aren't vaccinated, almost all of them aren't registered with the city. And, you know, that brings up the whole, why do I have to register my dog? The point of registration is just that, you know? Where does this dog go? Does it have its shots? If anybody's been stuck in the stomach with a needle because you don't know whether the dog you got bit has rabies or not, you would understand why registration is there. And, you know, I, I speak, this is my personal opinion, but I think you as a council would probably just as soon have the registration free as opposed to everybody ignore it. But it takes money for a staff to do that. So I think that's why there is a fee, but it's low. I, I don't know why it becomes such a big deal. So if we could just encourage people, this isn't, this isn't Big Brother. This isn't us wanting to know all of your actions. It's just to protect other citizens and us from ourselves because we do forget. We do, we've all probably made a mistake of, you know, being late on the rabies or being, you know, something, but even if you were late, you would at least have some documentation and then the doctors would be able to make a decision based on that. We have nothing. So Shane picks up a dog and we've had some pretty serious bites in the last, you know, six months. So, you know, you, you see it as well as, as we do. So I, I know that's kind of a, a passion of his and he's trying to, and it's a frustration. It's just, it's just like bike registration, you know? That's fallen off the map because nobody wanted to do the work and we weren't going to charge because it just ran people away. But how many people would be able to identify their good bike other than red with, you know, my little orange flag on the back? That's, that's not going to help us out because there's probably several that look just like it. We need a serial number, we need a personal identification number, that kind of thing. And the dogs are the same way. Chips would be great. We can't mandate that, but I, I don't know why not, to be honest. All my dogs have a chip. You're going to pay money for a good dog, why would you not try to protect it? You know, you'd like putting locks on your doors. Anyway, that's my update from Officer Porter.
Can I, yeah, well, just a bit.
No.
I'll come on now. I was thinking. So one of the things I've started doing in the city quarter is coming in dog at large or whatever, I require that they get their registration up to date and then maybe I'll dismiss the case, but you might hear some grumbling about that. But, you know, the registration fees for this C U, what, eight bucks?
Seven.
It's so cheap. And then the rabies tag. My son just got bit by a dog in the city about two months ago and it ended up costing me $400 in the emergency room.
Wow.
Somebody ran into a loose dog and he, he, whatever he is, he picked it out and took it to the vet and the dog took a chunk out of him, so. But anyway, so we have a lot of loose dogs, not that that's the major problem for the city, but I didn't want to sit here and not say anything.
Well, to her credit, I think, Judge, I think if the, Shane says there were 40 registrations up until you started this, now there's 60.
Sixty.
Because of her, you know, there's a third again more than.
$240. No, but some people might start grumbling about it, but that's kind of what.
Yeah, well, they do grumble. I, I'm out at the shelter and they do grumble, but at the end of the day, if we have a rabies tag, we can trace that dog and call the owner.
Oh, my son had to be on antibiotics, he had to get that and everything else, so it's a pain and they couldn't drive the dog.
Well, and quite often, to be honest, we'll have an animal brought in and we don't have a way to trace it. And after I've put it on Facebook or in all the social media and in all the places I know, if no one claims that dog after five days, we have the option to re-adopt that dog to someone, we re-home that animal. And occasionally someone comes out and says, well, that was my dog. Well, I'm sorry, had we had the rabies tag or a way to trace your dog, a, a chip, a. Well, I'm sorry, had we had the rabies tag or a way to trace your dog, a chip, thirty bucks, but a rabies tag is a ten dollar shot typically, you would've had your dog back. I could've called the vet, we could've found where your phone number is, and we would've been able to return your dog. So it's actually a courtesy, not an imposition. And I explain it to folks that way and they don't always appreciate that. But I feel like it's a courtesy, you know?
And Officer Porter typically on a first and sometimes even a second, if he finds a dog, if he can take it home, he'll take it home. Because the shelter's busy and full. It's just later that he's like, okay, now you need to go get your dog and you need to get your summons for having your dog out all the time.
Right. And actually at the shelter, we increased the cost of a stay to twenty dollars a day, mostly because we had folks who just thought, well, gosh, I won't be there till next week.
I'm going on vacation.
Right? I won't be there till next week, can you watch my dog? And so we kind of felt like that was a necessary thing to do and that's tough. If you have a dog for five days, that's a hundred dollars to get that animal out. So we've kind of made our rules more strict as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Nita, we'll go to you.
So I'm gonna kind of jump to the middle of my report so I can follow up on Chief's thing with the dogs. So Erin is working on creating a program and a spreadsheet for the dog registrations. The clerk's office is taking over the dog registrations, being that the judge issues, you know, if you have a citation where you have been caught with a dog at large or a dangerous dog, you have to have it registered and all that stuff. So we've taken over that process to register those dogs. Erin's been working very hard and she's putting together that program and the spreadsheet. And as people come in and register dogs now, we now have a spreadsheet of whose dog, what color the dog is, what the dog's name is, male, female, spay, neuter, the whole nine yards is on that spreadsheet. So that's gonna be a really good thing for us to have. The other thing that Erin and I are working on is we're putting together a free registration day. I'm working with Michelle Brandy. She is, she works with the vet out of the Front Range that comes to the Valley and does free spay and neuter clinics. I've spoken with both of our vets in town and both vets have opted out to help with a free vaccination clinic because they can't afford it. But after speaking with Brandy, she stated that the spay and neuter clinic that they do have, they also do the vaccinations for free.
Right.
So we're trying to coordinate. It's either gonna be November, December timeframe. She did contact me today and say that they have one that's going on in La Jara in this month in October, a free spay and neuter clinic. So we're gonna try to get it together and have it done in November. So in November, the plan is to do a free registration, free vaccination, free spay and neuter clinic. And then at that point, come the first of every year or the end of December, Erin will send out letters to all the dog owners and saying, hey, it's time to re-register your pet. If you have a new pet, bring this. If this pet no longer exists, please let us know. We also are looking at the regulations for the dogs. Right now, our fee is seven dollars for the permit or for the tag to register your dog. Some vets will give a three-year rabies vaccination. So we're looking at redoing the ordinance or the regs and adding in that if you bring us certification that your dog's been given the vaccination for three years, we will then have your registration with the city for three years. Instead of an annual renewal process, we're looking at either a year or three years, whichever they choose to do with the rabies vaccination. We can't go a two-year registration because rabies vaccinations are required yearly unless they get that three-year vaccination. So we're looking at that. And if they do a three-year registration with the vaccination, then the price would be just a little bit more for the registration for the three years. But I just wanted to follow up with all that, so hopefully, what did you call it?
Amnesty Day.
Amnesty Day for the dogs. So, working very hard to get that put together. So as soon as I get the dates, I will let you all know the dates on that. And Ruth Ann from the paper has also said that she would help out and create flyers and we'll hang them all over. We're gonna do it at Sky High.
And I feel that we knew our websites very well followed. I'm just curious, is there a way to simplify that procedure? And it's probably an IT question. Can you put a button on the city website that I could go online and register my animals and give you my debit card?
We're looking at that.
That would be so much easier. I know that a lot of people say, well, I work and I can't get in and they're closed when I'm off work and it's just too hard and it would really be nice.
Here's the problem with that, and I am working out with IT on that. The problem is, is that we don't make enough in dog registrations to pay for the program that would allow us to do that.
Right.
So, you know, you have a fifteen hundred dollar program versus seven hundred dollar profit. You're not, you're losing if we buy that program.
You've lost money.
So that's why we're trying to do this and we're trying to make it as simple as possible for people. So we're working very hard and diligent to get this done and move forward.
What about the revenue from the dog at large tickets and stuff? Does that, is that just go back into the general law enforcement fund or is that a funding source possibility?
It is, but again, there's not enough funding there to...
Starts heading up.
Turn that to me, Director.
We're looking at, we're trying, really trying.
Maybe some grant funding or something out there to create that through ASPCA or something like Humane Society, I don't know. I'll look at it and see if I can. Would be nice.
But we do have that option and, you know, Jenny and I have talked about it, Forrest and I have talked about it, and it's just, right now, it's not feasible from what we make to what it would cost to put that program into place. But we'll continue to look at it and see if we can make that happen. City clerk side of things, I've been working on chicken ordinance and Airbnb ordinance to take to the planning and zoning on October 23rd. We also have a variance application that will be heard by the Board of Adjustment on October 23rd. On November 1st, I will bring in front of you a fee schedule that will be done by resolution. I'll be sending it over to Mike within the next two weeks to look at. It's to update all of our fees and put them in one area. Right now, we have the fees for liquor license and contractor's license and the license for the courts, but they're not detailed. I mean, literally, our court section is fifty dollar court fine. That's it. That's all we have in there right now. So I've been working on that and it's completed and I'll get that to Mike for review and get to you for approval hopefully on November 1st. And that actually will also help with the courts a lot to have a fee schedule.
We're supposed to help our public.
And like I said, we have the fees in the regulations, but they're all over the place. So we're putting it all in one area in a fee schedule. We have three new businesses, Amplified Sports, Wise Bounty LLC, which is an internet, and Air Solutions, which is internet. I have one new contractor in the area, Challenger Roofing. Getting ready to start vendor license for the gun show and for the Holiday Bazaar. Liquor license, I know this is quite a ways away, but I've had, been in discussions with Mr. Deacon on the Brothers Keepers Second Annual Thunder in the Valley. He will be bringing that to us on June 1st. They're gonna be having that at Sky High. Jaime and myself have been working with Mr. Deacon, they get all the details worked out, so that's coming. Stars and Strikes have received their state license for their outdoor serving area, went over, did the inspection, they have followed all the guidelines. And Chief and I are very excited, their fencing is actually very adequate. It's, what, six feet?
Yes.
It's, it's a really good fencing, more than what we expected. So they met all the guidelines and they're in full swing. The courts have been very busy. We've collected eight hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents in restitution for the businesses in our community. Judge Zellers has advised several defendants with useful public service within the city. A lot of them go with Jaime and they complete their useful public service with Rec, Rainbow's End, the Animal Shelter. Those are the three main ones that we've seen with the useful public service. City attorney has been a big part in holding the pre-trial conferences in the court. We've collected twenty thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents from August 1st to September 30th. This includes all traffic violations and code and criminal cases. And then on the last note, just to let you all know that we've received the courtroom furniture from Alamosa County. It's in the courtroom, it's not completely set up yet, and I did get permission to purchase a new mic set and recording set for that room. So come January 1st, we'll be holding court in that room and as soon as I get it all set up then...
I'm still making that furniture, buddy. It's nice.
As soon as I get it all set up, I'll ask Alvi to come and check it out because it's gonna be a very nice courtroom. And then the theater, the haunted house, they're getting ready to put the haunted house together at the theater. And the theater board is looking at doing a Fourth of July celebration since City of Manajista has nothing for the Fourth of July. We're looking at doing a downtown dance, hamburger fry, something with the theater downtown to celebrate the Fourth of July. Theater is sitting at thirty-five thousand dollars in our account, so we're sustaining and doing very well. Any questions?
No, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nita, too, because right now I get to sit with all the defendants. It'd be nice to get them my own paper.
Don't worry about me taking furniture because the last thing I want to do is have to go before you.
I might know him too well.
With all due respect, Barb.
With all due respect.
Rob, you wanna get in your spot now? We skip to the, we save the spot.
So water leak, or not water leak, but water line. Day one, we replaced five valves in three different locations so we could completely isolate what we call our Patterson line. So we just finished, got everything backfilled. Tomorrow, they'll be out on Sixth Avenue and pull the line off of that street so they can get it backfilled and get the road back open. So there's a one block that's closed right there from Washington to Highway 15. That'll open back up before tomorrow afternoon and traffic will resume as normal. Project went as well as could be expected for that line. The only bad thing is none of what was on our map is actually the way it is underground, not a single piece of it. So we had to stop and run and go grab parts and that was one of the reasons why we chose to do it during the day and not in the evening, because that line, every time we've gone out there and had to fix a leak, that line has fought us tooth and nail. This was no exception. So we got it. We added five new valves to the system, were able to isolate more. The nice thing about it, it was a long outage, water went back on around 5:30-ish. But that prevents us from having to shut the city down, or at least that portion of the city down, three more times. So this one day, there will be no more shutdowns during the project. So we've got that line completely isolated now, the rest of the system is up and running and we won't have to shut people back off again. So overall, we added three new valves to our system. We've isolated that line and we'll be able to continue work, work expected for the next two weeks. So overall, pretty good. You guys have my written report. I'm hoping for any questions you might have on it. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Lovely day to be working outside all day.
It was not a bad fall day. Couple windy days, but not too bad. So so far, like I said, considering that line, it went as well as could be expected.
And you're minus a boot, or?
I am minus a boot. Looks really sore, but I'm minus a boot, so.
Go get on.
Progress.
Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
Nika, Kids Connection.
Hello. So I apologize for not having a report in the packet for you. I think I apologize every time I come up here for not having it. Honestly, I throw it together last minute and this time is even more last minute than every other time. I've been in and out of the office a lot over the last month because my family has been hit with a little bit of bad luck and every time I turn around, another one is injured. So I get to play nurse at home and then come take care of a bunch of screaming children all day. Kids Connection, daily attendance has been sitting steady at sixty-five to seventy every single day. Fridays have been a little slower, we're hitting maybe thirty-five to forty if we're lucky, but it's been a nice mellow end to the week. So I'm happy with the lower numbers on Friday. It gives staff a little bit of time to get to know more of our kids a little bit, one-on-one. At the end of August, we had a licensing inspection. I was a little scared because we have a new licensing inspector in our area and every other childcare facility or home daycare has called me and said, he's terrible, he's scary, it's gonna be the worst experience ever. He came in and it was actually really mellow. He went through everything he had to. We did really well on the site visit, so I was really pleased with everything. I always get scared when we have an inspector come in because I'm thinking like, what could I have missed? And this time, he wasn't as intimidating as everyone made him seem. I think because I've been with the program long enough and I know the handbook pretty well that I ask all the right questions and maybe I just get him off topic a little bit and so he forgets to look at certain things, I don't know. He also came over to City Hall on Monday and met with Forrest and went through our staff personnel files. Those, I had no idea what to expect. In the six years I've been with Kids Connection, we've never had anyone come and do a staff file check. They always say they're going to, but nobody's ever come. So for not having the files checked based on what state licensing requires us to have in the files, I think we actually did pretty well. When I was putting my report together, our files haven't even been discussed or somebody mentioned anything that needed to be put in since 2011 when Kids Connection was licensed. So I really just have to implement a couple of new trainings that I was not aware of at the time and, what else was it? We are now looking for someone to serve as a health consultant. I knew we needed somebody to give us medical delegation and to allow staff to administer medication. We've been lucky enough that we don't have any kids that need routine medications right now, but apparently you need a health consultant to actually be on call at all times and to check in every month, even if you don't have any children in your care that need medication. So I'm looking at some ways to try to get creative with that position and get somebody certified that's willing to donate some time to Kids Connection because the only one that I'm aware of, well, I'm aware of two, I haven't contacted the second one and he let me know about that person on Tuesday, or, yeah, on Tuesday, no, Wednesday when he stopped by. But one out of Center School District and she charges ten thousand dollars a year to be a health consultant for childcare facilities. I just don't see a way for us to pay somebody ten thousand dollars just to make a phone call once a month. I think it's ridiculous. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that my sister will be willing to step up in volunteer time because she is a registered nurse and that is one of the requirements. So trying to find a way to convince her to donate some extra time to my program. Other than that, the only other major thing I... Other than that, the only other major thing I have on my report is the poker tournament on October twentieth. We're starting to get some momentum and have had a lot more people step up to sponsor. I've had some individuals already commit to their share to play, whether they make it or not. They have made their fifty-dollar donation. And Alex has been working with the paper to get everything out in the paper. He has had contact with a local person about donating the trophies for the tournament as well. So other than that, that's really all I have. If anyone wants to know more about our poker tournament, stop by Kids Connection or give me a call, and I can explain how the whole thing works. It is definitely a good cause and helps keep these kids busy and give them something to do after school. So I think that's about all I have for you. If you have any questions for me.
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Jaime. Good evening, everyone. Aside with my reports short and to the point, if you guys have any questions, please let me know. And to start with, I would like to start with our Pee-wee programs. Actually, you know, it's going good. And just to give you a little bit of history on that, I think it was two years ago that we started this program. And I don't know that this happened before here. I haven't heard any information about that. But when I started it, it was kind of scary. We didn't know if it was going to work. I know people were interesting, kids who wanted to do it. And we had coaches lined up, and then right when we started working, they said they couldn't do it. And then with uniforms, it was because the fitting was, you know, fitting girls to fitting boys. A boy, like, "Yeah, I face put it on." And with girls, you can't do that. And so, but as we go, this is our second year now, and the coach that is in charge of that, you know, it's keeping on top of everything and it's trying, the program is going smooth, and girls seem to like it. And we're getting numbers, more girls every year, so. And that's a good thing. And with football, we just about, in the last two weekends of football season, we actually host our last two games here in Manavista. So I invite everybody to come see. We play at the High School Field on Saturday, starting at twelve with the third and fourth. And then right after, we start with the fifth and sixth. Football and volleyball run about the same time. We had tournaments for volleyball last weekend in Sargent, and two of our teams end up in the championship and won the championship, and two of our teams took third place. And not that we're out there trying to get the championship, but by doing that shows our kids are doing a progress in their learning the sport, and they're actually advancing. And to me, that's what matters to me. Moving on to adult programs. I had in my list to start with the adult cycle season. We tried it last year. We put it out there for the adults to sign up. Unfortunately, we only had like two teams or three teams that signed up. And this year, because of unfortunate circumstances with our staff, some changes that happened, we put it on hold. I also had an adult mod volleyball tournament scheduled, but because of some changes on the staff with the scheduling and all that, we decided to go ahead and hold on that. Let's see. On the Sky High in Parks, sorry. The Sky High, we only had a few things happening there this past month, and it was a potato fest, more like a rally that they had, or not rally, but more a crafts event that they had. It was fun, I enjoyed it, and the commodities that went in there. At the Chumman Park, we had a few reservations, family reunions, the potato fest again, a couple barbecues, and birthday parties happening there. And I spoke to Lo and to Robert, I forgot his name for a while, about now that we're off-season at the South Pole Fields, I was thinking about here next week or the following week, going in there and spraying the infield on both of them and start scraping those weeds out of there to see if we can do something with those goheads there. I tried those two things he told me to do, and we pulled some out, but they just keep coming up. And so we're going to try to spray with some strong. I got a couple of recommendations from Co-op, what to do there with spraying off-season so kids don't are there and all that, and see if that works. And hopefully by next season, when it's ready to go, it's clear. So we're going to try it. Also be doing a little bit, I'm going to start, we're going to clean up on our storages now that we had to pull out some stuff out of the public publication, yeah. We moved some stuff we hear to the storage booth right here. I don't know what you call these, Forrest, right next to the police station.
This is where you're going.
But as I've been doing all that, also, we have some stuff over at the storage right here in the park, and we have some stuff over at the ball towers. And so it's kind of like everything, and we have some here, too. So it's kind of everything everywhere. And so I want to kind of put everything together, like maybe the soccer balls here because that's where we play soccer, baseball women over there, football women, we're probably going to keep it here. And just going to rearrange everything so it can be easier for us to keep track, inventory, and we know where everything's at right away. Just a little follow-up on the marquee. When we started the marquee and we put it up and all that, we found out that the actual power box was connected to the county. And we got permission from the county to get power from it during Stampede. And right after Stampede, they shut it off. And so we've been working with, we were working with CE Electric to put a new box there, is that what it's called, a new box, to power the marquee. But he got busy with now with the harvest and all that. And so we contacted Power Pro Electric, and they're working on it. They're going to start working it next week and hopefully get it done within that week and get it going again. And our sponsors are probably wondering like, "What's going on?" And I think that was part of my fault for not getting ahead of it and finding out before we started a project on that. But we will get it going again. Let's see. And all these things that I've been talking here, I didn't put in the report. I thought about it as I was sitting there, I was like, "Why, I didn't put it, I didn't put this." But a couple practices that I've been working on. One, I know I mentioned to you about the scoreboards. I also had to put that inside for a while and hold, but I'm going to start that project again about the scoreboards for the South Pole Fields. Like I said before, it hasn't been working for at least five years. And so I want to, kind of the same project that I did with the marquee. I want to see, you know, businesses around the city who will want to donate and help out to purchase new scoreboards for the kids' fields and go with that. And once I have the project or the proposal, I'll take it over to Forrest so he can review and make sure I don't get into something that I don't suppose to, and then we'll go from there. Another one that I've been looking into is from Hill Cities and Towns, Leewell, Colorado. I kind of introduce Forrest to the person that is in charge of that, and he's going to look more into that and see if there's something that we can bring into the city or the town of City of Manavista and get going here. Another one is the dog trail or dog park. I've been having some issues with the community going into the South Pole Fields and letting their dogs in there. And of course, we always find not very, well, good surprises there. Most people are good at picking up their, you know, dog stuff, but most don't pick it up. And so the same reason I locked the dog out, to keep people out of there when they're not supposed to be and make messes. Same thing with the field. So I started looking and searching for grants, about can we do this? And this is something that we can do, and I mentioned to Forrest. And so like, put it out there, see what the community thinks. If that's something that the community wants and can support, then we'll start looking into maybe grants and see if we can build a dog park so they can take their dogs there. And one great idea, now that we're having a community service, might be a good place to take him and clean it up. And maybe we'll stop people from getting in trouble that way.
Might have to give credit to for one.
Also, we met with Nick from Chlorotrace, no. Oh, I can't remember. But anyway, he's in charge of funding for trails and stuff. And so he, I met him at a meeting, and he's like, "I heard a lot about you, and I kind of was like, "Oh, is that good or bad?" And like, "No, I need to meet with you, and we want to start this project. I don't know what you think." But just kind of like bike walking trails around here. I talked to Forrest about it, too. One that we were talking about is a trail that maybe connects Manavista and Del Norte in this stretch right here. Don't know how that's going to play, don't know if Del Norte's interested, but it's something that I'll probably, you know, go and talk to them and see if that's something that we're willing to do and see how all that is going to tie in and what we can do. And hopefully, we can move forward with that. We just met today, this morning, and so it's nothing. It's just up in the air still. Let's see. All right, so going back to coaches, Pee-wee's and all that, you know, I think a lot of people take for granted how much time coaches put in to coach Pee-wee team. And not to say that this is a volunteer position. And yeah, they coach their daughter or their son and all that, but nevertheless, it's time that they take to teach our kids and to be out there with the kids and keep them in a safe place. And so sometimes I feel like they're underappreciated for the time that they spend. And so with some of the money, and I mentioned this to Forrest, too, with some of the money that we got donated from Rio Grande Prevention Partners, I would like to have a volunteer appreciation barbecue for those volunteers. Don't know the date yet, I'm thinking somewhere in November, over at the Sky High. And just kind of invite them and, you know, have hamburgers, hot dogs, and just kind of thank them for their time. And so when I do, I'll send you guys a date. Maybe you guys can stop by there and also show your appreciation for that because that's what keeps all this going, you know? If we don't have coaches, we don't have teams. Kids can drive themselves, kids can, you know, call a practice by themselves. So that's my plan. And lastly, you know, I've just been attending meetings, you know, agriculture conference. We've started with those meetings now. A lot of CTC meetings, RGPP meetings. And then just recently, last week, we had a Sky High committee for the renovation. But what I have heard before is when this started to happen about renovations of the Sky High, there was different mindsets of what they want and what they want to do with the building. But this last meeting that we had, it seems like everybody is kind of in the same page of what this community needs, not just one committee or this other committee, but the whole community, and not only this committee, but the whole valley. And that's something that I was pretty happy with to hear, and that all these committees are actually coming together and with the same vision. And so we'll see how, where that's going to take, too. I'm excited, too. I think we all know that that building needs some improvement and that this community needs some kind of place where our community can go and enjoy. Hopefully, we can do that. Other than that, that's all I have in my report. I don't know if you guys have any questions, concerns? One last thing, sorry. I always bring, you know, I always want the public or the community to come and talk to me if there's any concerns of any kind. And I've just been hearing some about being at my position and me coaching my kid in center, because I live in center, and so he goes to school in center. And so when they see me coaching Pee-wee games in Manavista or somewhere else, they're like, "What are you doing?" Well, I just want to say, you know, and I don't know because this just came to you, and now that we're here and they had the chance to see this through YouTube and all that. My position here, I do a hundred percent of what I have to do to get this going, and I put all my support on the kids. But I also wanted to understand, I'm a father, that I like to be with my kids and like to support my kid. And so if it's me coaching his team in center and competing against Manavista, then this will be it. And so I just wanted to put that out there, that I'm not doing more for them than what I'm doing for Manavista. But if my son asks me to and he needs me, I'm going to be there. And so I just want to clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Victor, do you have anything?
Sir?
Harry?
Just a couple of things. I was at the CML Annual, I guess it was kind of like a conference, but it was very enlightening. Pretty much every community that, you know, as close as you can get in the valley was represented. And the other I was going to mention was something that Jaime mentioned was the Sky High Committee, very encouraged, like he is, about the way things are going with that group. I usually end up mentioning CTC, communities that care. Maybe you haven't seen any major effect of that, but it is in process and you will see changes. Just keep that in mind when you hear CTC or it's a division of also RGPP who's Rio Grande Prevention Partners. It's making a difference already in all kinds of issues, all the way from drug and alcohol, tobacco abuse to suicide prevention. It's a powerful organization, and I just want to keep getting that, their work and that whole process out front of the community. And we'll be seeing some very dramatic results here pretty soon and we'll be able to talk about.
Not much from me. I have the letter from the fire department. I don't know if everybody else has gotten their ship, but it's their time for their planning. Their twenty-eighth annual Manavista Fire Department Chili Supper, and that's going to be Saturday, November seventeenth, from four to seven thirty P.M. at the fire station on South Broadway. It says, I'd just like to read it real quickly, just part of it. Locally, the Manavista Fire Department and its firefighters have been busy the past year. They've responded to over two-hundred-and-twenty-nine calls for situations involving structure, fires, car accidents, wildland fires, and other emergencies. In addition, the firefighters from Montevista participated in more than fifteen-hundred hours of training in order to prepare for the varying calls that they respond to. Their goal for the upcoming year is to purchase battery-powered extrication tools, which will be used primarily in emergency situations involving car accidents." So a lot of, most of what they do for those kind of things come through, come through donations, and the Chili Supper is a big community event, and hope that everyone can come, because those guys, they're all volunteers, none of them are paid, and they donate thousands of hours to help their community, serve their community, all of us when we need them, so I hope everyone can come support them."
Good cause.
Okay. We recess this meeting until October sixteenth.